Everyone's ready? All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Board of Supervisor meeting to order. The date is May 25th. The time is 9:03 a.m. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand up, and I'll ask Department Head or who's in charge of ITC, our Information Technology Central, Paul Gibson to lead us in the pledge, and then please remain standing. Jeff Pishney from Love Our Cities will be doing the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hey, right before I offer this brief invocation, just want to share an update. Love Modesto, you know, we started 13 years ago, our first Love Modesto Day. We were hoping for 100 people, and over 1,200 people showed up, you know, in Modesto. And since then, it's gone to other cities, you know, elsewhere as well. I remember two years later, this cranky lady from Series, anybody from Series here? She came up to me and said, hey, I don't want to do your Love Modesto. You start a love Series, and I'll be a part of that. And then the ball just kept going to nearly every city, and our county has been a part. This last year was really big. We became two organizations. We have Love Our Cities, which is focusing on cities outside of our area. And so we have nearly 100 cities around the country that are loving their city, and our plan is, in the next 10 years, to have 1,000 cities around the world, all starting right here in our area. And then we started Love Stanislas County. It was Love Modesto, and we're still loving Modesto, but we're loving Stanislas County. And we really want to help all the cities in our county to love their neighbors year round, to love our schools year round, and to love all of our kids and our families that are underserved. So let me pray, thank you all for your support. God, thank you so much for this community that we live. This truly is a community. And we love Stanislas County. We love all the cities here. And God, we know we have challenges here. And we're not here, though, to complain about our challenges. We're here to do something about them. And God, I'm grateful for my leaders I stand before right now, who are doers and not just talkers. And God, I thank you for their role in serving our county, and I pray blessings upon each of them, each of their families, their employment, and certainly their leadership, you know, in our county. And God, I pray that you would give each of them wisdom today in this meeting beyond themselves, God, that you give wisdom that is from above in the decisions and the conversations that are going to take place here. And God, I pray for civility in this room as well as outside this room, God. And as much as possible, God, I pray for unity, unity among our supervisors and unity among our community, God, so that we can move forward after COVID here together, that we can truly be the best community that we can possibly be. In your name I pray this.
Amen. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you very much, Jeff, and another one of the givers in the community, giving of his time. I think back in 2013, I gave a state of the county address. I always like to highlight volunteers, people who are truly volunteering to make the community better. I always talk about how we're being paid to do things, but folks like yourself really make a difference in the community. I want to thank you. Appreciate it. Paul, thank you also for leading us in the pledge. Okay, we have a presentation, and it's the Modesto Children's Museum. Katie Barber, who is the board president, and Ryan Foy, the vice president of the Modesto Children's Museum. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. We're excited to be here today. So yeah, we're here today to share the progress of the Modesto Children's Museum and where we are in our, in our, how we go forward. So we have started our not-for-profit about two years ago. And usually what I like to start with is a little video that we'll pull up here that sort of goes through what a children's museum is and get everyone familiar with what we're trying to accomplish here. So he's going to pull that up separately on YouTube, just since we're having trouble with the slideshow, so you can go ahead and play it. So yeah, a children's museum, which is different from a regular museum in the sense that a regular museum generally has exhibits behind glass or behind stanchions that you go read and look at and observe. And a children's museum, as opposed to that, is an interactive, hands-on experience that gives kids the opportunity to learn and experience new things through play. So it is often a sort of subversive, hold on, we'll get this video going so it can follow along with my talk. So yeah, so like I said, exhibits that allow kids to learn new things through play. So they range from exhibits from water play areas to climbing structures to exhibits dealing with steam, science, technology, engineering, arts and math, as well as music and theater. And they will include water play areas, climbing structures, and our museum will incorporate all of these things and more. And you know, it's super important to focus on the idea of early childhood development here, especially in Stanislas County. The statistics are that kids in Stanislas County, a full 70% of kids going into kindergarten are rated as not kindergarten-ready. And that statistic continues on into third grade. A full 61% of third graders are not reading at a third grade level, and that continues on to high school graduation rates, postgraduate attendance, job placement, on and throughout. And so we're wholeheartedly adherents to the philosophy behind the cradle-to-career movement and cradle-to-career partnership, that the way to fix some of the problems in our society is to start at the very beginning and help children learn the skills that they need to learn to be contributing members of our society. And so these opportunities in a children's museum, really to start with that early childhood development and get involved with the parents, so that it's really an opportunity for the caregivers, the parents, the grandparents, whoever's taking care of these kids, to get involved in their education and help these kids try new things that they wouldn't necessarily experience in their schools, in their houses, and give them new opportunities. And so that's really our goal here, is to bring something like this here to Stanislas County so that our students and our children can experience something like this without having to travel so far away. So these were just a few examples of exhibits in other museums around the country. And our mission boils down to that we want to create a place that can encourage creativity, critical thinking, and a love for lifelong learning, and create an environment that is, gives these opportunities for learning and play, fosters family involvement, and also serves as a resource for our community, our local schools, and our organizations. You can head back to the next slide now, that's great. So yeah, we're getting back to why this is so important here in Stanislas County. You know, there is truly no experience like this here in our county. There is a children's museum in Stockton, there's a science museum in Lodi, and there's an abundance of opportunities like this in the Bay Area and up and down the coast cities. But for the most part, anyone in Modesto or Stanislas County who wants to take their kids to an experience like this has to travel upwards of two hours and is taking their tax dollars out of our community. And so we really felt it was so important, you can get to the third slide for me, that'd be great. The kids need something like this here in their own backyard. And so we've really strived to create something like this here for ourselves, and next slide for us, well. So the big news is, we have purchased a building. We are now property owners of a building in downtown Modesto. We purchased this space at 928 11th Street, which was previously the Fat Cat Performing Arts Venue, and more recently was the Heart and Soul Coffee Shop run by the House Church. And so it is 11,500 square feet directly across the street from a sitting parking garage and catty corner to the Gallo Center, and it gives us numerous opportunities to create something wonderful here locally. And we're very excited. We've enlisted the services of a design firm called Gyroscope Incorporated, which is based out of Oakland, which is specifically a children's museum design firm. So they've built and launched over a dozen children's museums around the world. They're one of the top talents in the industry right now, and we're very excited to see what they bring to the table in terms of what kind of exhibits we're going to be putting into the museum. Next slide, please. A little more information about us. This is our founding board of directors. It's a group made up of three local families, all with kids. We have, together, all of us have seven kids under six years old, so we're very excited for our kids to get to the museum in a couple of years. Next slide, please. In addition to our board of directors, we've formed an advisory committee of locals and people out of town who are looking to help us with backgrounds ranging anywhere from civil engineers to attorneys to early childhood development experts and everything in between. Next slide, please. Additionally, we've been working hard to partner with local organizations, everything from funding through the Stanislas Community Foundation, business opportunities through opportunity Stanislas, sponsorship opportunities, and really just partnering with all of the organizations here to really become a part of this network here locally, of all of these organizations trying to help our children. And we want to become a central figure in that work as time goes on. And next slide, please. So a few years ago, we did a feasibility study in terms of whether or not this would be supported here locally. And we put out an online survey, and we sent it out to, we made a conservative effort to get a diverse polling population and sent it out to schools, libraries, community centers around the county. And of, we got 2,500 responses in the first couple of weeks, and it was a great response rate. And overwhelmingly, the response was yes, please, we need this here. If this was here, we would go. Next slide, please. And what we also saw was that our net was really wide. You know, the respondents we got came from, we got 2,500 responses from 53 unique ZIP codes up and down the Central Valley, from as far north as Manteca, as far south as Merced. And you can really see our customer base will not just be drawing from Modesto, not just be drawing from Stanislas County, but truly the tri-county area and all throughout the Central Valley. The statistic is that a family is willing to travel up to two hours for an experience like this. And so you can really see how we could even potentially draw customers and tourism in from the Bay Area for families who are looking for something new to do at a lower price point and to get out of the heavy traffic of their areas. So we're really excited about the potential for our customer base and how much impact we'll have in the entire region. Next slide, please. So the other big question is whether or not this is economically feasible for our community. And the bottom line is, yes, there is enough interest in this for it to be a self-sustaining business model. And that's key to point out. You know, we are operating as a not-for-profit right now, but once we are operational, we're much more of a social enterprise in the sense that the services that we offer and the income we draw in, the profit we make, will be able to put back into the community through those services. So the museum will draw income mainly from three sources of ticket entry. There's single-ticket entries, annual pass holders, and school field trips. So you can see from our respondents, over 75% said they'd be willing to pay between $6 and $20 for a single entry to the museum. 85% said they would seriously consider an annual membership and come throughout the year a number of times. And in terms of field trips, as a local comparison, the World of Wonder Science Museum in Lodi, they put their school field trips for the following fall up on sale in January, and they're sold out by March. So there's really a high demand for this kind of experience for our kids, and we're excited to be able to offer that to all of our school districts locally and even further out than just Stanislas County. Next slide, please. And one thing I do want to point out, too, is that's really important to our organization, is making sure that the museum is accessible to all in our community and not just the people who can necessarily afford this kind of experience. So when we were really focusing on that equity and access issue is to become a part of some pre-existing programs that are out there. So one of which is the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is, puts on a program called Museums for All. And through that program, it allows anyone who's on any kind of government assistance, whether it's WIC, food stamps, or EBT, they're able to gain free or reduced entry into the museum through that program. Another one here locally that's already happening is called Discover and Go through the Stanislas County Library, where you're able to go to the library and check out a ticket to an experience and use it free of charge just by the virtue of being a library member. So both of those, we're fully on board with implementing both of those services for the museum. It's just a question of how we're going to subsidize them and make sure our business model still sustains these programs. But we're very excited to be able to really be a champion for equity and access for all of us here in Stanislas County and making sure that all of our residents can benefit from this, because those are the people who need this most of all, the children who are behind and need a chance to step forward. Next slide, please. So down to brass tacks of what this will take, we are in the middle of a capital campaign to raise about $5.5 million to get this project off the ground. And amazingly, we have only started raising money in December, and we've already raised $1.8 million in committed funds, which is about a third of that capital campaign goal. And this goal is to, our goal is to get us doors open by 2023, and this capital campaign sees us becoming financially solvent by 2027, looking at our financial projections. So most of that 1.8 million has so far come from private family foundations, which is wonderful, and we're still exploring further private funding through private funders, but we're also exploring corporate giving, corporate sponsorship, and government funding as well. And so our next steps is sort of, we need to raise about $2 million in cash by the end of 2022 in order to get the exhibits fabricated and installed, and then the further, the rest of that capital campaign can come after we're open to sort of cover our operating expenses. So in terms of that government support, we are really trying to position ourselves as a part of the COVID relief funding in, for three reasons. One, in terms of economic recovery, in the sense that we are a shovel-ready project that in 18 to 24 months will be able to offer services to our county that brings people to our county, tourism dollars, and helps all of our business sort of rise tides by bringing more people to our industries. Second, educational recovery. For the past two years, our students have been in a really tough spot and have fallen even further behind than they were in terms of national averages. And so we really feel it's imperative that we start our services as soon as possible to help bridge that gap and get our kids back to where they were and even better than they were. And that early childhood development is key for that, for all of our students. And lastly, just in terms of quality of life, you know, one of the biggest complaints we hear about Modesto and Stanislas County as a whole is that our industries really struggle to bring high-skilled workers to want to live and work here. And that's in all industries, medical, tech, even agriculture, and in the sense that we want to create something that is a family-friendly amenity that will make people want to live here. So we can say to people, considering a move to Modesto and Stanislas County, you can say, we have a top-of-the-line performing arts center, we have a top-of-the-line children's museum, we have wonderful restaurants and a welcoming community that's ready for you to come be a part of it, and make those people come here and make our children who leave and go to school come back and invest in Stanislas County. And so a lot of that question is how locally our government can help support us. And the city, it is on their agenda this evening. The city council is, has put some of their COVID relief funding towards some of these community projects, so they are planning on investigating a $500,000 contribution to our cause, and we are excited to see how that turns out, and we welcome that support from the city and the city council, and we look forward to collaborating with the county in some way, in whatever way you are able to support us. Next slide, please. So just to sum up and wrap up again, just so you have it all in your head, that $5.5 million investment gets us starting construction in 2022, aiming for the museum opening in early 2023. And when we're open, we're aiming for a 5% market penetration, which would equate to about 83,000 guests in the door each year. To put that in perspective with something locally, the Gallo Center, for example, when they opened about 15 years ago, was hitting about 2% to 3% market penetration. And then last year before COVID, they were at about 30% to 35%. And they get about 200,000 guests in the door each year. So you can see from those numbers, the, our projection is really conservative in terms of how many people we're hoping to reach, but we are aiming to be an icon and an anchor in this town, in this community, at the level of the Gallo Center in terms of what we can do for our community, the services we offer. And we're really excited to become a part of that tapestry of Modesto and Stanislas County. So I'll wrap it up there. Last slide for me, and I truly thank you for your time. We're excited about this project, and we're excited about the amount of outreach we've been receiving since we announced that we purchased the building, and we can't wait to see how things progress as the year goes on.
Comments? I know we have some comments, Supervisor Withrow.
Just real quick, Ryan, thank you, great presentation. Appreciate you being here, and Chelsea, and Katie, and little Lily, Lily, seven months old, she should be up here talking too, hopefully soon. So you hit on everything, you know, I, to some extent, have been involved a little bit with this since you guys started this thing, and you kind of hit everything that, that made me think of why this is a good project, why it seems like it's something that we need here. You talked about the Gallo Art Center, just think if, you know, the people that put that together years and years ago, if that would have never happened, and, and how much it's helped our community here. It's nice to see another generation of young adults coming up and working to try to make this a better place, rather than just the old guys that sit up here. Not that we're old, speak for myself, I guess, but, but, but it's great to see, see you guys out there kind of pushing and trying to make a difference in the community. Good stuff. It kind of falls in line with a lot of the stuff that we're doing, our focus on prevention. You talked about creative career, which kind of was born out of focus on prevention, and, and this is just another arm of that. And we talk about, I think one of the most important things you talked about is accessible to all and on our disadvantaged communities. And so this is, this is key, you know, for those kids that come out of those communities and don't have the opportunities. We all, over the years, took our own kids to these places, and, and were able to, luckily, we're blessed enough to have the wherewithal to do that. These kids out of these communities don't have that opportunity unless the school has a field trip, and, and those are few and far between. So, so I think it's a great opportunity. You know, we talked about wanting to attract people here, make it a place people want to work and live and raise their families, and this is something that would help that, helps towards that. And another source of funding that I hope you guys go to is the schools. I hope we, we get to the school boards and, and the different school districts and really look to them to help contribute toward this also, because I think it just, it's something that's so badly needed and something that they should be a part of. So anyway, thank you for, you guys for being here, great job, and let's see what happens.
Thank you.
So I just want to echo the sentiment. I, I think that when you look at what you've done to this point and, and how you've wrangled support, you come up with an idea, and it really takes a lot of effort, and I know that you are putting in the effort, along with Chelsea, right, and, and Katie over there with...
Lily.
Little Katie. I'm not sure, I can't, but I appreciate, again, expanding opportunities in the community, and as Supervisor Withrow talked about, it has to be for all people, and I know we've had this discussion, and I, I think you've set it up really well for success. All right. With that, thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to item five, the public comment period. It's an opportunity to speak on anything that's not on today's posted agenda. That's why Dr. V is sitting down. We're not going to public comment. Take that all back. First, we're going to go to item four, update related to the 2019 Novell coronavirus COVID-19 update, and Dr. Wei Champagne will be presenting.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, Supervisors Mr. Hayes and Mr. Boz. Happy to be here today. Unfortunately, Mary Ann could not be here today, so I will try to do the presentation by myself and, and talk intelligently about the things that she knows way better than I do. Here is our EpiCurve. What I did for our graphs today, just to change it up a little bit, is I started them from February 15, and so just really trying to zoom in on what we're seeing now, because when we have those big peaks from last summer and over Christmas, it's really hard to see any detail of where we are now. So as you can see from what we're seeing with the green being the probables, which are primarily antigen tests, and the blue being confirmed, which are primarily PCR tests, we are definitely stable to decreasing. I think if you look there, you really can't see that right around that 426 number, there was a little bit of an increase in cases, but you're going to see it a little bit more. You can see there's not as much low spots in the middle of all those bars. So as we look at our daily case rate, this is our seven-day average, seven-day lag that the state looks at to place us in our tiers, you know, you can see we were coming down pretty well, and then right around the middle of March, we pretty much flattened off. We did have a little bit of an increase in late April, early May, and then we are coming down again nicely since then. We've really seen a pretty sharp decrease in the daily cases being reported. Not quite, not quite far enough, but we're getting down there. Here's our percent positive test, the other metric looked at for our tier assignment, and you can see again, late April, early May, that increase in percent positive. We actually did go over 5% for a little bit of it, but again, coming down nicely and into the 3% again. So we are seeing a decrease currently. Hopefully, it remains sustained. I think you all know that we aren't making metrics for orange yet, and probably won't get there by June 15, but at least we're, we're on a good path right now. If we look at our total hospitalizations, our orange being our hospitalized, all hospitalized, and our red being our ICU, you can see we, in fact, had that bump again at the end of April, which was a little worrisome, right? We made metrics for purple, returning to purple for one weekend there. Little bit of a difficult time, but we managed to come back down, and we're seeing a good decrease in our cases that are being hospitalized. And I looked back over the data yesterday to look, and so our hospital is very low right now for total people in the hospital. And so if you look at the hospitalized, the last time we were at this level, we had one day in October, otherwise it was June 14, June 14 of last year. So we've had about 11 and a half months with higher hospitalizations from COVID up until now. If you remember back in October, we actually got into the red tier, which means our case rate was less than seven, which we haven't even gotten there yet. So we're maintaining a higher case rate right now, but our hospitalizations are lower, and this is what our vaccination has done for us. We've done a really good job of getting people who are at risk of severe illness, including hospitalizations, vaccinated. So we're seeing that in that our hospitals are really very low. If we remember, we peaked out at 363, and I think yesterday we had 37 people in the hospital, so really, really doing well. Here's our three measures. This is unofficial. The state will put out the official stuff at noon. Our unadjacent case rate, seven days ago, was 7.8%, positive 3.1%. Our HPI lowest quartile, 4.6%, that's gone up a little bit, and I'm hoping that comes back down. The test volume was 311.4 per 100,000 per day. The state median last week was 323.4 per 100,000 per day. We will see what it is this week, and then we'll see what our adjusted case rate is. But our metrics are firmly in red. This is our second week of a case rate in red, which is very exciting. So I'm trying to figure out if we're actually in red tier, not based on the accelerated health equity metric, because it makes a difference in how you revert to purple. Not that we're going to revert to purple, but I'd just like to know what the rules are right now, and I'm, I'm a little unclear on that right now. So I'd like to remind us, since testing volume depends on what our adjusted case rate is, which depends on the tier we're in, we still have a lot of places to go get tested, and testing's still very important, not just because it determines how they adjust our case rate, but it also is really good to know if you are infected so that you can stop the transmission. This was posted late last week. They've been putting this seroprevalence on. So this is for adults 18 and older. It's kind of a, just a conglomeration of a lot of different measures. So it's people who go give blood, it's people who get their antibodies tested, it's, it's just a whole bunch, there's some labs that are just doing random samples on some blood. So as you can see, we in the San Joaquin Valley buy, and then they, they do some statistical analysis, trying to make it population, you know, appropriate and stuff. So we are at 71.2% seroprevalence, which means, it should mean that between vaccine and infection, 71.2% of all adults are now protected, because, you know, our vaccine rate may lag a little bit behind the Bay Area and Southern California, but because we've had more infections, our, our seroprevalence here is higher. So this is really good news that as we look at our adults, we have a good level of protection in all the adults in Stanislas County. Again, it's adults. And then I'm going to go into vaccines. So as you can see here, there've been a total of 387,595 individual vaccines given to people in Stanislas County. We really struggled with the vaccine data. For some reason, it didn't work yesterday, so I don't have a lot of specific vaccine slides, but honestly, it hasn't changed that much since last week. Here is our doses administered by day. You can see we peaked out at, you know, given up to over 6,000 doses in a day for any one day there. We're down to averaging about 2,000 doses a day, which is still a really nice average. You know, we have many, many partners. It's not just public health out there giving it. There are many, many partners, pharmacies, Kaiser, all, many people out there giving vaccines. So still, while it's not at its peak, we still have a pretty good number of people getting vaccinated every day. Here is what we have given. I added in the May 22. We've had 16 pods, points of dispensing last week, 1,029 first doses. You can see how that dropped off. There was a time when we were doing eight or nine. Second doses of 2,043, the single dose Johnson &amp; Johnson, 190 last week, so a total of 3,262 just through public health last week in all our various outreach efforts. Here is our schedule for the coming week. As you can see, we have a pretty full schedule, again, Saturday and Sunday at the Crow's Landing Flea Market. We were there last Saturday and Sunday, had a pretty good response. I think 188 total vaccines, somewhere around there, were given. And here's the MyTurn, how to sign up for a vaccine, just to remind everybody, it's easy, it's in many languages, it's, it gets you into appointments in many different places. So thank you, that's all I have for today, and thank you.
And just a quick reminder, for anyone who cannot make it to a vaccine clinic, can also go onto MyTurn, and they will come to your house. So it is pretty, pretty amazing, but you go to myturn.ca.gov, and you can sign up. Any questions?
Just real quick, Julie, just thank you again, as usual, for everything you're doing. This seroprevalence, first time we've, I mean, that's kind of encouraging when you look at that for the, I mean, when you look at it compared to everybody, you know, all the other regions that they talk about here, I mean, we're almost the highest there next to, I'm not sure what southern border is.
Southern border is Imperial in San Diego.
bets are off at June 15, as far as these colored tiers, right?
So they put out the guidance in this past week that really just has some, for general activities, restrictions on indoor activities greater than 5,000 and outdoor activities of greater than 10,000. There are still, there's still going to be guidance around healthcare systems, right? That's separate. Schools, because the vast majority are going to be unvaccinated even in the fall for elementary schools, so there will still be some guidance around there. So there are some special places where there will continue to be guidance, but yes, other than that, the tier system goes away on June 15. So since you have to make the metric for two weeks before you move, we're running out of time to get there, but we're on a good track, and that's very reassuring.
Won't matter at that point, though. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item five, public comment period, and opportunity to speak on anything that's not on today's posted agenda. Please keep your comments to five minutes, and I do have one speaker card, Mr. Emerson Drake.
Good morning. Emerson Drake, longtime Modesto resident. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen at home. You know, it's great, quite honestly, to be here. Not that I survived anything other than the time, but it's still nice to be here. You can't participate from home through Zoom, but so you drug me in. You know, if I can't get the mountain to come to me, I go to the mountain, right? So I ask you to bear with me, because I've got a couple of local concerns that involve the board. You know, for the last four years, the city of Modesto's had an issue with their city council. We've had four people on it that were dragging their heels on a consistent basis, trying to make sure nothing actually got accomplished. I know that's hard to believe, because you guys get things accomplished. You're the gold standard when it comes to public record requests. In any case, then the last two years, it became pretty obvious as to why. We had three of those four decided to run for office, you know, being on the city council wasn't good enough. They wanted to jump to higher callings. Let's go with that. And as a result, we got some mixed, major mixed results. These same people are the ones that ran at least one female exec out of town, cost the citizens of Modesto over $200,000 in hush money. And now, oh, and they also managed to, let's just say, award no-bid contracts to some of their friends, but we won't go there. You know, there's always a loophole and a way around things. If you can get the finance department head to say, well, that's okay. I don't understand it, but that's the way the game's played. They set the rules. But recently, I think we've had someone taking advantage of this COVID issue. You know, we've got a mayor who happens to be a registered nurse. Yet, one of your board members, using his good old boy connections, has managed to get himself agendized on the Modesto City Council agenda on a regular basis to update us on COVID. Now, I would prefer to have a nurse update us, or someone from the county would have been even more preferable, just to, after all, it was mostly just a call-in anyway. Sometimes those connections sounded like they were borrowing the Wi-Fi over at the Taco Bell, but be that as it... It's the way it sounded. But anyway, because of this, I'm getting this feel of blatant electioneering. Now, I understand why people, board members, go to the city councils from time to time, but I don't recall anybody ever being agendized on a regular basis to talk about something they basically know nothing about. And recently, it slipped into the matters of the absurd, because we spent 15 seconds talking about COVID, nothing had changed. And the rest of the time, we were regaling people with tales of our abilities at hopscotch on city sidewalks. Now, I'm sure some would say, well, we're just trying to encourage people to go out and start mingling. Well, I tell you what, I'd make a suggestion that that same individual, if you want to bring people out in public to mingle, set up an old carnival-style dunking booth and volunteer to man it, and I guarantee people will come. Now, I ask you, as a group, to suggest to each other silently that we don't agendize for electioneering, not on the city councils. So I looked, I looked at Turlock and I looked at Series. I didn't find any agendas where they said someone's going to, from the Board of Supervisors and particular individuals, going to be here to update us. Matter of fact, Turlock uses their fire chief, I believe, as someone to update about COVID. At least, that's what's on tonight's agenda. So I'm asking you, because this group's always been good with peer pressure, quietly. Leadership has always been a, something I found in Port... Well, since the day is assigned, but that's beside the point. In the last 20 years, I found this group to be exemplary when it comes to leadership. Didn't always agree, but the leadership was there. So I ask you, let's go back. Don't use COVID as an excuse to get your name out in the public. It doesn't look good. Friends may be patting you on the back saying, yeah, but the rest of us are going, this is taking advantage of a bad situation. To shift to a better note, I want to thank the county and the efforts they've made at the Modesto Center Plaza. I was one of those. My wife and I took advantage, I'll call it that, and got the shots a long time... Well, a couple of months back. My wife's a 30-year insulin-dependent diabetic, so it was extremely important that I take care of her. The daughter threatened me. No. So anyway, I want to thank you on those efforts, and I do think that all that's important, and I hadn't heard of the make the call. That's incredible. That's just incredible. But if a city asks you for information, I would ask that you send it by a reliable source, someone who's not a politician, no offense to all you gentlemen, and let somebody talk that knows what they're talking about, and skip the electioneering. I'm sorry I ran over. I thank you for your time, and again, it's great to be here.
Nice to see you again. And I will say that I go after the fire chief during public comment, typically at most meetings at Turlock City Council. I know I've heard Buck come into Riverbank and speak, Chance has spoke at Series, and you told me...
Series Patterson Newman.
It's the agendized part that concerns me.
Supervisor DiMartini was agendized before, but I don't think it's happening anymore. But anyways...
We're agendizing Newman. That is at the mayor's discretion. I didn't request that, but we are agendizing Newman. But other than that, I speak during the public reports for that.
Okay. Yep, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else, anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would any board member like to pull any item?
Chairman, I just have a question on B4.
B4, okay. Anyone else, any other items? Anyone in the public want to pull or discuss any item? Okay, we'll come back to B4 for questions.
The aerial photography that's going to be taken, if this agendized item passes, will those photographs be available to our incident commanders, emergency responders out in the field to be used? Or are they going to, is the department going to have to pay a fee to use them?
I'm going to call Mr. Gibson up here.
Good morning. Paul Gibson, ITC Director. The question is about the use of the aerial imagery by incident commanders, et cetera, in public safety.
Our special districts out there that are providing emergency services?
Yeah, absolutely. We make all of that aerial imagery available in our GIS system, which is available to the public, but we also work very closely with the Office of Emergency Services and SR 911, and they have full access to all of that data, so 100%.
Okay. I had read through it, but I could never find it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action, consent calendar.
I will make a motion to approve all consent calendar items.
I second.
Sorry to catch you off, Buck, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I did, if I could, really quickly go back to Emerson's comment. I think Dr. V is on the agenda now. She had texted me to give a report to the Modesto City Council on COVID. Dr. V?
And if I could just add to that, for context, many of our city councils have reached out throughout the last year, asking for the public health officer or other high-ranking folks from public health to attend their council meetings, and just sheerly due to their time constraints, we haven't been able to accommodate those requests. So we've offered up other individuals to attend meetings to, you know, at least deliver informations, because they're routinely briefed in large briefings. However, now that our time has freed up a bit, we are able to schedule some of those briefings directly from Dr. Wei Champagne, and I think Modesto City Council's either on this week or next.
Perfect. Okay, move on. We don't have any public hearings. We'll move on to item eight, which is a discussion item, approval to issue the... Approval to issue the extension of the advance notice of withdrawal from the Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Agency and termination of the Joint Powers Agreement, and approval of a contract with Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services Joint Powers Authority to administer local emergency medical services for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. And presenting today will be Richard and Jewel.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CEO Hayes and County Council Boz. Richard Murdock, Assistant Director of Office of Emergency Services and Stanislaus County Fire Warden, and I'm here today to give you an update and try to keep this in historical context as far as what has happened. The members of our team happen to be Sheriff Jeff Dirxy, Mary Ann Lilly, Jewel War, and myself, that have met with the Mountain Valley EMS Agency JPA Board. So we can go to the next room. But before we start on that, I just want to give you an update. On Friday, May 14, the Mountain Valley EMS Agency JPA held a special board meeting. The board accepted the resignation letter from Lance Doyle, who was the executive director, and appointed Cindy Murdaugh, who happens to be here in the audience. She was holding the position of deputy director, and now she is the interim executive director. So on March 30, 2021, staff recommended the termination of Stanislaus County's participation in the JPA, but acknowledged that more time would be needed to identify the details of an internally established EMS agency function that could serve either as a single-county or multi-county service on a contractual basis for other counties. The Board of Supervisors supported the withdrawal from the JPA to be effective between October 1 and December 31, 2021, and directed staff to coordinate with the other JPA participant counties to establish options and return to the Board of Supervisors within 60 days with a more detailed proposal for the future of administering EMS functions. The Board of Supervisors also authorized staff to negotiate and execute the annual operating agreement with an option for an early termination. On March 31, 2021, CEO Hayes issued the notice of withdrawal from the JPA to be effective between October 1, 2021, and December 31, 2021. The Health Services Agency Managing Director, Mary Ann Lilly, provided notice of the intent to enter the annual operating agreement for fiscal year 21, 22, with an option for early termination. April 14, 2021, the Mountain Valley EMS Agency JPA Board met, considered the notice of withdrawal from Stanislaus County, and the JPA established two working groups. One group that would consider continuing the JPA without Stanislaus County, and then the other that would work with Stanislaus County on options to serve all five counties. And again, they met with four representatives from Stanislaus County, as I mentioned earlier. April 30, just to continue, county staff met with the JPA work group, which included the JPA board members from Calaveras and Alpine Counties, and the fire chief from Evans Pass Fire Department. The discussion included further consideration of the current circumstances and broadly covered the advantages and the disadvantages of alternative models, and those advantages and disadvantages are listed there in the parentheses. The timing, or the work group also considered timing implication of any potential changes, and continued on April 30. The discussion was productive. It resulted in the following conceptual plan for consideration. Stanislaus County would delay withdrawal until July 30, I'm sorry, June 30, 2022, developing the internal capability to administer EMS agency functions effective July 1, 2022. The other four JPA counties would decide on the future model each would pursue by December 31, 2021. This could include adding one or more counties to the JPA using the January 1, 2022, through June 30, 2022 period to prepare for implementation, which would be effective on July 1 of 2022. Stanislaus County would offer to provide EMS agency functions under contract to the other four counties as another option for consideration. The updated reports from the two JPA work groups are expected to be presented at the next Mountain Valley EMS Agency JPA Board of Directors meeting, which will be on June 10, 2021, and we do have representatives from the county that will be attending that meeting. So the next steps. Staff will work to develop a forecasted budget and staffing plan for Board of Supervisors consideration to support EMS agency functions internally. Staff will also develop a staffing and cost plan to scale up the capacity should the other counties decide to contract with Stanislaus County for the provision of EMS functions for their respective counties. By extending the withdrawal to June 30, 2022, Stanislaus would be providing the other JPA counties with sufficient time to assess alternatives and authorize a future model by December 31, 2021 for implementation by July 1, 2022, in order to coincide with the beginning of a fiscal year and the annual state funding cycle for multi-county agencies. Staff would then return to the Board of Supervisors by August 31, 2021 with the forecasted budget and staffing plan for an internal EMS agency, and would include the potential to scale up to a multi-county operation. So the recommendations from staff, we have three. The first is to authorize the chief executive officer or his designee to issue a revised termination notice to the Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services Agency Joint Powers Agency for withdrawal of Stanislaus County from this agency to be effective June 30, 2022. Second, authorize the managing director of the Health Services Agency or her designee to negotiate and execute an agreement with Mountain Valley EMS Agency to administer local emergency medical services for fiscal year 21, 22. And third, direct staff to develop a financial forecast and staffing plan to administer local emergency medical services for Stanislaus County as a single-county administrator effective July 1, 2022, and an alternative financial forecast and staffing plan for multi-county capability and return to the Board of Supervisors with recommendations by August 31, 2021. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, we do have a board member. Supervisor Buck Condit is the primary board member for the MVEMSA, Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services, and he might have some thoughts or questions?
No, it's good that the discussions are going well. I'm glad to see that the work groups are discussing what potential impacts that they may have on them, the other counties, and this is something that we've got to get right. We're dealing with, at times, life and death, and our relationships with the hospitals. So I'm glad to see that the discussions are going well. I look forward to the June 10 meeting to see the more detailed information.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just a quick question, Richard. On, you talked about potentially adding one more, one or more counties to the JPA. Is that with us staying in the JPA and adding one or more counties, or us just pulling out and then picking up one or more counties?
Yes, that would be us pulling out and then picking up additional counties. There's been some discussions with, I believe, Tuolumne County, as well as Merced County. And so we don't know what that report out is yet until we attend that meeting.
Okay. So I'm just going to, just wholeheartedly agree with Buck. We do have to get this right, and we just don't want to leave these people... We've said before, you know, I don't want us, this to end up in a fight and us just saying, well, that's just the way it is, and we walk away, and good luck to you guys. And we've got to make this thing work for them, even if it's to some extent at our expense. You know, we've got it, we just can't walk away from these guys and end up with them in a bad way and us just fine. We've got to make sure that they're okay, too. So I just want to reinforce that again. I think we've said that before when we came here and talked, and it sounds like you guys are working very hard towards trying to make sure that happens. So I just want to encourage you to continue on that path, and we'll see how the next meeting goes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Actually, I've got one, since I've got Rich here, and thank you, Jewel, for the report. It was a great report. Since I have him and he's captured audience, I've had some concerns come up with extended response times with our ambulance, sometimes to the... Sometimes to the fact that some of our basic life support engines have had to call advanced life support engines to come and support them until a transport unit could arrive. Sometimes 30, 40-minute difference. I wonder if you have any information on that, Terrence?
I do limited information. I do know that there's been some issues with regards deployment of AMR ambulances, which impacts the system as a whole. We've dealt with this back in 2017 and 2018 where there is a shortage of paramedics and it's a staffing issue, and they're unable to staff the ambulances as we would like to see them staffed. And so that draws resources from the healthcare districts, and it creates a big issue with regards to mutual aid. And so I, sorry about that. With that, I have the director of AMR. She's here today. She could probably elaborate a little better than I can with regards to the data. And Cindy, can you come up and maybe give some information regarding that?
And Richard, while Cindy's coming up, could you also just fill in in terms of what data do we share on a routine basis? I recall that we had some specific outcome measures and data reporting on these very issues. Are those available on a monthly or quarterly basis? And can we make sure that each of the board members are receiving those?
Absolutely. I just received a report last night from Mountain Valley EMS Agency from Cindy Murdaugh with regards to specifically the mutual aid responses to look at the variable between AMR and the rural agencies. And specifically, when we talk about rural, we're talking about the healthcare districts and the impact it is on those districts. And so I can forward that information to you to show you what the dichotomy is between those two ambulance rural providers as well as with AMR, so you can see the big gap that we have currently.
Good morning. Cindy Woolston, Regional Director for American Medical Response. As Richard stated, we have been struggling with our staffing here in Stanislaus County. I will say that this is not unique to Stanislaus County, nor is it unique to American Medical Response. This has been a statewide, actually a nationwide issue where there have been a shortage of paramedics coming into this line of work. So that being said, we did start experiencing a staffing issue at the beginning of 2020 when COVID hit. We had our pipelines kind of dried up, meaning that the schools, the paramedic schools and the EMT schools, for that matter, saw at least a 50% drop in enrollment. Some of them were higher. Those are our pipelines that come into us that we hire through. So as a result, between that and then our own employees contracting COVID, unfortunately, we had quite a few out for long periods of time. We are starting to see this pipeline come back as COVID restrictions are being lifted. The enrollments are increasing in the schools, both with paramedic school and EMT schools. Currently, AMR has nine full-time paramedic openings. We had 14 EMT openings. The EMT openings here by the end of the month are probably going to be completely full as we've had three academies to bring those folks in. We're starting to see paramedics coming in as well. So we've got some of those going through academies or through the new hire process for us right now. We've also been able to award eight scholarships to our own employees to attend paramedic school. So they will be starting paramedic school. One class will be starting in August. One class will be starting in October. And so we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel where the staffing is concerned. As Richard pointed out, when our staffing is low, it does impact the other providers as they have to provide mutual aid. We also provide mutual aid to the rural providers as needed. But AMR being the largest provider within the county, we're, you know, going to see most of the impact occurring with mutual aid into our zones when our staffing is as low as it's been. I don't know if there's any other questions that you have or anything else that I can explain to you?
So one of the things that in 2017, myself and Deb Thrasher from Public Health created an assessment on Stanislaus County to look at where the county, based upon the current conditions, we should go. One of the recommendations was to add a tier of basic life support EMTs to respond to incidents in the county. About 68% of the total 911 calls don't require a paramedic. That's pretty high. And so can we put EMTs on an ambulance, respond them to an incident? And if the incident requires a paramedic because it fell through the system, we have paramedics on the engine that more than likely will be there as first responders in some locations. And so the intent of that was to look at managing those 68% basic life support type calls and saving our paramedics for the higher acuity type calls. Now, would that have fixed the issue with mutual aid? I don't know if it would have fixed it, but I think it would have helped it. Because then we would have had paramedics available to respond to those higher level acuity calls. And this is not anything new. It's being done in many counties across the United States. In fact, some counties like, or some locations like Boston and Seattle, they deploy maybe eight paramedics for the day for a system that large in Boston. And the majority of the responses are EMTs. And so you have two paramedics on an ambulance. You have two EMTs on an ambulance. You have a total of eight paramedics. And so if they respond in conjunction with the EMTs or if the EMT responds to a basic life support call, they get on scene and realize that this patient really needs to be seen by a paramedic. The paramedic crews can respond split up. One would go with the EMT and transport to the hospital, and then the other one would stay in service with the other EMT on an ambulance. And so that was basically what we designed in 2017. And that was, was, I took that to the ambulance providers at the time and mentioned this is the direction we wanted to go. Leadership changed, and at that time, it was not approved. And that was not the direction that the new leadership wanted to go in. So here we are today, and that's one fix that we can work on now. And changing the system and adding BLS to our 911 system and look at the data after, you know, three months and see if that actually has helped the mutual aid issues.
And that was also written into the RFP as a potential enhancement to the system and as well as the ambulance provider contracts. We would explore that.
Yes, because the last thing we want to do is to put additional duress on our healthcare districts. And the healthcare districts specifically are there to provide service to the constituents, to that community that pays a specific tax to have that ambulance there.
Cindy, you were talking about the paramedics that are in the system now, going to school. So if they're just starting the program now, and I can't recall how long this is, but two years before you're certified?
No, no. They, we would expect them to be fully ready to staff an ambulance within a year, maybe a little bit less, depending on how long their internship goes.
That's all I got.
Cindy, thank you for being here.
Sure.
I appreciate that. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just kind of question you just a few things here. I'm gonna come after you a little bit here. I just want to give you a heads up. Here it comes. So here we are today, is what Richard said. Here we are today. A couple of us were here four years ago when we thought we solved all this as far as, you know, our issues that we're having, you know, with ambulance and response times and things like that. And I know I get calls, and I'm sure other people have gotten calls about, I know, I think one, I can see Pye out there. I think one out in Salida recently, 16, 17 minutes, whatever, before an ambulance. And it really affects our volunteers, you know, our rural areas, as Richard's talking about. And we've got to figure this thing out. I mean, we can, I guess, throw somebody on the back of a fire truck and take them into the hospital if we have to, but that's not going to work. And so when you say you have, when these staffing problems started to develop, and I get COVID, everything COVID, I know, affects, you know, is all of us, but still. Do you give us a heads up? I mean, are we made aware that, yeah, we're having staffing problems? Here's a problem. We're gonna have, it's gonna be a bad week. Or it's gonna be a bad, you know, month.
Yes.
So that we can do what we can try to do to help you. And I mean, what can we do to help? Because when we get in these spots, well, we just, we all have staffing problems anymore. That's the story of this country, I think, right now, staffing problems. But when that's happening, you know, in your department, it's life, you know, threatening. And we need to very much be aware of it and try to, you know, rally the troops and do whatever we can. So is there anything in place right now that's saying, okay, here's the problem we're gonna have this week or this month?
Yes, so I have met regularly with Mountain Valley to keep them apprised as to what our staffing levels have been. We send out a daily schedule to Mountain Valley as well as the fire department so that they can see how many units we have on, on any given day. In addition to that, within the labor contract, we have the ability to mandate employees to backfill shifts, which we've been doing on a daily basis. We've also had several discussions with the labor union to talk about this issue, that we need people to step up to the plate to keep units staffed until we can get folks in and hired and trained, which they have been supportive of. We're also in negotiations with them right now to have the ability to mandate part-time employees. So their language in their CBA right now only allows full-time employees to be mandated into shifts. We're working with them, and they are supportive of developing language so that we have the ability to mandate part-timers into those open shifts, which they are very supportive of. So we're hoping to have that agreement here within, you know, two to three weeks, which will give us that ability. And like I said, we've got academies going on right now where people are doing their right time, and they'll be available to staff units here very shortly. By the end of June, our EMT levels will be fully staffed. And then we're just continuing to work on the paramedic piece, so.
Okay, so I'm just gonna look to Richard and hope we're gonna try to work through this and get this thing where it should be.
Yeah. And, you know, this came about, which is one of, just one of many of the driving forces why we're here today, talking about the importance of Stanislaus County having more awareness of what's taking place and being more engaged. And unfortunately, there was a disconnect in the past, with the past administration. And I have total confidence in Cindy, who's the interim director now. She stayed very, and it's only been a week. And so she's staying in close contact with us and working to try to put together a plan that's going to mitigate this issue. Because the only, the only people that are going to suffer are those who call 911. I mean, we've got, especially on the west side and on the east side. And if we're depleted on the west side of the county because we have a limited number of ambulances there, as well as the east side, there has to be some reciprocity from AMR to provide mutual aid to those locations as well. And so we really need to dive in and make some changes with what we can make changes to, that we don't violate any manner of scope of operations that would jeopardize the current RFP, which is another discussion. But we're really looking at trying to mitigate this issue and trying to put some more ambulances on the street, whether they're EMS or BLS ambulances or ALS ambulances.
Do you think if everybody was okay, like 30 days, we get back here with an update, here's the latest? I know we got, we're probably coming back anyway with the Mountain Valley EMS pretty quickly here. If we could just another update here, and maybe Cindy, you come, if you don't mind, I'm sure you have plenty of things to do, but.
I can make it happen.
We think this is pretty important. Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
If everybody's okay with that. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone from the public, Mr. Make any comments? Okay. I did receive one email from Isaac Stern from Southern California, I believe. I'm trying to, regarding this item. But I'm not going to read it in the record. I'm just going to announce. Anyone else seeing none? Any other comments from the board? Okay, entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion. And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, gonna move on to correspondence.
This board has received a letter from the California State Treasurer requesting that the county assist in raising awareness about the importance of saving for higher education and the role of a 529 college savings plan.
Refer to the chief executive office.
This board has received a copy of the Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District Annual Report, which will be considered at their June 15, 2021 meeting.
Acknowledge receipt of report.
This board has received the claims as noted on the agenda.
Acknowledge receipt of claims and refer to the chief executive office. Is there any Board of Supervisor reports?
Just a statement, really. But I follow a lot of briefings coming from the fire agencies out there. And fire season is upon us. If you have not prepped your properties for wildfire season, you are behind. Please get that done for your neighbors, for your community. Give firefighters a chance to save your property.
Good advice. Good advice. Very dry out there, for sure. It's coming early, gonna come hard. Last thing, I just want to remind people again to encourage people to get their vaccine. You see, the trend line is good, but we're still not where we need to be as a county. And you can go to myturn.ca.gov and make an appointment. We have many different, as you saw, there's many different places to get a vaccine as well as coming to your house. So I encourage everyone to do that. Legislative Fiscal Management report?
So I'm just gonna be brief. There is a lot of activity with our federal and state lobbyists as well as direct connections with our congressman's office on a whole host of issues. I think the board's been made very well aware of all of the state budget proposals that have come forward and the negotiations that are now going on with the state of California between the governor's office and the legislature. So we're following all of those matters as well as trying to advocate where we can throughout this budget process to support our local community. As we get a little further in the process, and we have more to share about specific proposals and how they'd be impact Stanislaus County, we'll bring that forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a closed session. County Council Bose?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have closed session this afternoon this morning.
Can we hear me? Here we go. So we have conference with the labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Tamara Thomas, Kiravink, Dana Torres, Jeff Sloan, and Burke Dunfry. And the labor organizations are noted in the agenda. Conference with county security manager is our second item. And the cybersecurity officer with regard to threat to public services pursuant to government code section 54957 subdivision A. The board will confer with the county security manager and the cybersecurity officer regarding matters posing a threat to the security of public buildings and to the security of essential public services and the public's access to public services or facilities. And with that, would be appropriate to ask for public comment? Any public comment on these items? Okay, seeing nothing else for the good of the order, we adjourn to a closed session.